Okay. Good evening, folks. It's the April 15th Town of Halifax Planning Board meeting. It being 7:01, we're going to begin the meeting. I'm going to begin the meeting by reading one of the Governor's orders. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Halifax Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of the members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in this order. I also want to make note that this meeting is also being videotaped by Area 58. I will need all board members that are present, and all votes will be taken by roll call. Members present.
Gordon. Rick.
Amy's muted. Alan?
Amy Trup, sorry.
All right, good. Okay. All right. Before we begin the agenda, I just want to make a quick announcement. I am going to have an additional agenda item under discussions. It's regarding the floodplain bylaw. It's not on the agenda, but I don't anticipate any discussion on it. First order of business is the WB Mason invoice for office supplies. Can someone make a motion?
I'll make a motion to pay the WB Mason March 24th, 2021 invoice number 21888393 for office supplies in the amount of $57.11.
Jessica?
So we have a motion in a second. We'll go to any discussion? Hearing none? We'll go to a roll call vote, and I'm going to begin at the top. Amy, you're first?
Um, yeah.
Gordon?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Alan, yes. All right. Our next order of business, we have a hearing at 7:05. We're just a couple of minutes early. We have a hearing for 640 Plymouth Street. Where it's a hearing and an appointment, we'll just, I'll skip down to discussions just to handle one of those until we get to 7:05. First item for discussion, 49 and 63 Carver Street, the status on the Fire Chief's order. I don't know who added that to the agenda. Anybody have any questions on that?
Regarding the letter, is it?
I have no idea. It's on the item for discussion, and it may just got carried over from our last meeting.
We do have a letter in our package.
Information to share. Does anyone else?
There's a letter in the packet from, from March 20-
Page 12, Alan.
That's the same letter we had from last week?
It appears to be.
Okay. Many needs for discussion? I don't have an update. I didn't, I did not follow that through, so.
I don't think so.
Okay. It now being 7:05, we have a hearing for site plan review for Anthony Curtin, 640 Plymouth Street, Halifax. Location of the building is the same address. It's map 60, lot 14. Is Mr. Curtin available or a representative for Mr. Curtin?
Do we have to open the hearing?
Is it? Well, let's make sure we have someone here.
Good idea.
Anyone here from Curtin? Why don't we, we'll just give him a couple more minutes, and we'll continue on with the, the next item on the discussion.
Alan?
I'm sorry.
Now, we probably should open the hearing, and they come in. If they don't come in, then we, then we carry it forward. You know, but, but the 7:05, you usually open the hearing, and if there's nobody there, you go on to the discussion, they come in, and just go back to it.
Okay. You want to make a motion to open that hearing?
I don't because I'm going to recuse myself from it.
Okay. Do we have someone else that wants to make that motion?
Do we have the advertisement so that I can, or is there no advertisement?
There's no advertisement on the site plan, so all I had is the, to read from was the Planning Board application for site plan review, page number five.
I would like to open the hearing for Anthony Curtin at 640 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. 02338. The location of his building is the same. It's map number 60, lot number 14. The applicant is Anthony Curtin, and he is looking to change or expand, expansion, I'm sorry, make an expansion to his use for an above-the-ground fuel storage.
Okay. May I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll open the meeting, but we'll just adjourn it temporarily until we have a representative from either Mr. Curtin or representative appears. Is that okay with the board? All right.
Okay, I'll come back in then until you-
Yes.
Go back to-
Joanne, you, you did take Gordon out just for a couple of minutes there, and he's back in?
Yes.
Okay. Next item on, on for discussion is the Franklin Street solar array. I am assuming based on the agenda that we're still waiting for the hard copies. I think the board approved that contingent on getting some new hard copies. Okay. Next item is Pasture Lane. I do not have any status updates at this point. We did reach out to the applicant to let them know that they had to file a modification of the, of the subdivision.
Do we have a copy of that?
I would assume so.
I don't have a copy of that.
Yeah, well, I don't, I don't know. Let me see.
We need to have copies of these things. Also, the Pasture Lane letter that I received isn't an email, and I think that you said that it was an email from John Burkett.
What are you referring to? Your public records request?
Um, no, I'm, I'm looking at a letter that says, "Hi, Alan," but you said that you had an email conversation with him, and it wasn't just a letter.
Okay, you, you, where are you?
Page 14.
Okay. That's the same update that I gave the board. I read that into the record, I think, a couple of weeks ago. Is that your question?
Yeah, no, we're asking for the email communication.
This is it?
It's not an email. It's a letter.
Okay. Okay.
You said it was emails within your, your email.
So, so maybe I need to be, stand to be corrected. I'm really not sure, but this is what I got from Mr., okay. And it would have been an email form, whether he put it in his attachment, I have no idea, but all I can tell you is that, because I'd never met the man, I've only spoken to him on the phone and emails, so this would have come in as an attachment.
And you didn't respond?
Yes, I would have responded.
Okay.
Yes, I would have responded to that, and I believe my response was what the board had, had indicated as far as the new hearing process.
Great. I'd love to see it.
Okay. Next item is Complete Streets. That's been on our agenda. It'll stay on there until we come up with some sort of, the list has been submitted. I believe the Highway Surveyor is working on that with the coordinator from Complete Streets to narrow it down to two or three projects from the 15 that were requested. Anybody from Curtins yet? Nope. Okay. The next item is Subdivision Control Regulations, Chapter 235-6, Section C. I asked that be put on the agenda. It was some confusion, and we're finding that Halifax's regulations for any A and R plans is substantially less than the state's, so it's something I think the board is going to need to look at. We have a 14-day requirement. Once that plan's been submitted, we've got 14 days to act on it, which is really not enough time. State law is 21 days, so I think we need to take a look at that and at least have it become the same as the state regulation. Does the board have any interest in making those changes?
I don't think it would be in time for our town meeting.
Well, the, the question I have is, I believe it's under subdivision control, which is part of the zoning, so I think this would in fact require town meeting approval. I'm trying to get clarification on that. Go ahead.
It doesn't require town meeting approval. It's a regulation of the Planning Board. The Planning Board will hold a public hearing, public notice and such, and then make a decision whether to make the change, but it does not require town meeting approval. It's not part of the zoning bylaw.
Okay. I, I think what I'd like to do then is we'll, we'll put together what our specific regulation says, and then what Chapter 40 says. Put it on the agenda for our next meeting, and then kind of make a decision as to where we want to go with that. Pardon me?
That sounds like a good idea.
Okay. Anybody from Curtins yet? All right. Next item on the agenda is very long. Everybody's got it. It's an email request from Amy. I'm not going to read it unless somebody else wants to read it. The next three items are requests from Amy regarding correspondence. It looks like communications. It looks like emails from the Fire Chief. Something about 450 Industrial Drive, so unless Amy, you want to go through that, I don't see any reason to discuss it, unless you do.
Um, I do. I think that it's a reminder that we need to have clarification of all of our communication to and from attorneys, agenda, agenda, talking about agendas with different, well, don't want to say townspeople that are looking to do things. We need to see that communication to, within the board so that we can all understand the process of everything that's going on.
Okay, so that's the purpose of your multiple requests?
It is. It's Planning Board business that we've been asking for, especially when we have correspondence from Attorney Mayo and Attorney Questle that's paid for by the Town of Halifax residents. We need to see it. So, that's why.
All right. Next item on the agenda might resolve some of that. There's a letter from Attorney Mayo. I'm not sure where we are. I don't know, Joanne, you can help me. What number we are at that? 11. So 15 is your request, Amy. Let's see, where Attorney Mayo?
20.
20?
Number 20.
Number 20. I'm an 18. Okay, this is a very lengthy letter. Well, the board wants to read it into the record. I don't see no use for reading the whole thing. I can paraphrase it if you want, or is everybody comfortable with just reading it in their package? I think this will address some of your questions, Amy. Okay, you mean no, nobody wants to discuss it?
I mean, I was reading it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I thought everybody had a chance to read this. Okay, we'll, we'll just take a minute.
Okay. Well, is it open for discussion?
Absolutely.
The way I read it, that Town Council feels that if some member of the board calls there, then that's privileged information, talking to them. So I don't see how that helps the board at all. So if anybody's making a request to Town Council on Planning Board issues, seems to me like that request should go through the secretary, should be asked, and the, the question should be sent to the members of the board, and then the request for the information from Town Council come back to all members of the board. Because if one person, if I call Larry Mayo and I ask him something, he tells me this, whatever it is, and I come back and I tell the board, "Well, this is what he said," then I don't, I don't expect everybody on the board to sit there and go, "Oh, I guess that's the law." If there's an opinion, it should be presented to the board so that we can see it. Other than that, it becomes an opinion. So I, I think that's a waste of the taxpayer money, calling and asking something, then coming back and going, "Well, my interpretation of what he said is this." When, when he writes it and sends it to the board, then that would be what we all look at, and we all can make a decision on it based on that. So I don't, I don't see, I don't understand this as far as any one of us being considered as the client for the Town Council. When you ask a question, you're asking for the board. It's not privileged, so I mean, I disagree with the way that this comes down. If that's the take of it, then no member should be asking for information that's going to be presented in a meeting unless all members see it. The question and the answer.
Anything else, Gordon?
No.
I think he addresses that in the last paragraph. That, you know, that it's important that if an individual member of the Planning Board understands and respects the purpose of the intent of the town. Actually, it's not that. It's the next paragraph. In summary, correspondence between individual members or staff of the Planning Board and its legal counsel are not subject to mandatory disclosures under the Public Records Law. If however, the Planning Board as a whole desires to obtain advice or opinion, that correspondence is, so your point is taken, and that that correspondence is-
Because I think-
Available to the public, so I'm not 100% sure.
I'm not, I'm not so sure it's available to the public if it comes back to the Planning Board.
Okay.
I don't, but that makes it public, that part, but the client is the Town of Halifax, and if the Planning Board's asking that, I mean, let's say we go into a legal battle, and we call the Town Council for an opinion on something, it comes back to the board, not an individual, but to the board, it still has client privilege.
Okay. Now, you, you could be right. Unless I, I guess that it would be, you know, unless it was something that we did in executive session, then you're probably correct. I think he states that, this. That's what he states in there. That if the board makes a particular request, the board makes a particular request, then in fact, that correspondence, just like this particular correspondence, comes back from the board. The request was made. I think Amy Trup made the request. Advice was sought. This is the response. I, I'm not here to interpret the, the response. We just, this is what it says, so if there's any information that's requested that's beyond the scope of this, then I guess you don't get it. If it's within it, then you get it. I'm not, I'm not going to try to interpret the letter. I didn't draft the, the letter. Amy made the, the request. Request was sent out. This is the response.
We have public wanting to speak.
Okay, and we're going to, we'll finish off with the board first, and then we'll, we'll-
Well, I will definitely say that if there's any Planning Board advice that is asked for, for an agenda item or any of the like, it needs to come back so that we can all read it. And that should be on a rolling basis that we receive that information. We shouldn't have to ask for it. It should be part of everything that we see. The town pays for it, and therefore, we represent the town, so not one member should be able to get that information. All of us should.
Listen, I'm not here to debate the issue. This, the request went out. This is a response. Any other members of the board got any questions on that? I mean, I can't open it up to the public, although if anybody wants to speak. Rick, any comment?
Um, I don't know. The way I'm seeing it, it's like if you want some information, then you, the whole board, the board as a whole has to ask for it, not just one board member. Am I right or wrong?
We talked about this at the last meeting, and, and he said that he had information. We've talked about it at other meetings, and he said he had information, and we asked for it, so I was just reminding Joanne in an email.
Now, when you, when you say "he," what are you, what are you referring to?
I'm sorry, you. I, we, you had information that you keep receiving from Larry Mayo, Attorney Questle, and Bob Burkett as a, as an example, and we need to see it.
Okay.
And it's not beyond a role to be able to understand the whole, and we have to look at all of the information in order to make a decision.
All right. Any other comments? You said someone wanted to, was it somebody from the audience that had their hand raised up, Charlie or something? I don't-
I know that Bob Ross had put in a couple of comments. It appears he'd like to speak to the board on the subject.
Okay, Mr. Ross. I, I didn't see any comments, but.
Good evening. Yeah, I, I have a couple of questions.
Could you just identify your name and your address for the record?
Sure. I apologize. Bob Ross. I live at 198 Thompson Street, and I have a couple of questions. I, I hope you'll entertain them. My, my first question, I know Ms. Trup, obviously from the agenda, has submitted a public records request. Is there a fee attached to that, or as a member of the board, is she being provided those records at no cost?
Who are you directing your questions to, Mr. Ross?
I guess I would pass it through you to whoever the appropriate person is to respond. I, I would assume that's the Record Access Officer, so Ms. Snow?
Okay. I, I would think that there would be costs involved in any type of massive request like this, so in my opinion. I don't have anybody that I can reach out to at this moment, but I'm going to say that when you have a records request of this magnitude, you've got hours and hours of work that has to be put together. I would believe there would be a cost.
I, I guess to share taxpayers' feelings on that, I, you know, I find sunshine to be far more beneficial to the general public than I do revenue in this instance, and certainly the fee can also be waived, I, I believe, by the Record Access Officer, but I would, I would certainly suggest that, that that be discussed, and perhaps that's a question for the board to selectmen. I, I don't know who has the authority to, to waive that fee, but I, I certainly think it's inappropriate to, to charge a member of a sitting board to, to have access to records pertaining to either active or past business with that board. Just, just seems wholly inappropriate.
Just, just a comment. I, I think if you have particular situations where you've got cases in front of us, site plan reviews or whatever, and that information should always be readily available. I think the magnitude of this request-
Something that should be ongoing.
Let me just finish. When you're looking for one year's worth of, of emails, this is extensive. This is massive. You know, we don't, you know, we get, we don't get paid for this job, so if I have to hire someone to go through a year's worth of emails, someone needs to pay for that. And that's my only comment, Mr. Ross. I don't have the answers as far as how much this thing is going to cost. When those answers do come out, then we'll, we'll have it at our next meeting, but this is very extensive. This is not, you know, let's go take a look at a plan in the office. You know, and that information, if, if there is a plan, or if there is a particular situation, then all the members can in fact go to the office and get the, get that information. But this is extensive, so.
Should we, should we talk about what the state decided to say?
I have no idea what the state decided to say, so.
Well, Charlie put in an appeal to the state, and it is, it has come back that, and I'm going to find it.
Amy, hold on just a second. Okay. What we're discussing was Gordon's request to go over the Tony Mayo's letter. So if there's some other communications that have come through, either before that or after that, that either I'm not aware of, not on the agenda, let's put it on the agenda for the next meeting. We're discussing Attorney Mayo's correspondence, so let's just keep it at that, and if you've got something else, let's just add it.
It has everything to do with this.
Okay. Anyone else have anything else to say?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Ross, I totally agree with you that no member of a sitting committee should be having to pay out of their pocket to get the records that should be available to them. In the past, I've had to pay to get the records, and I didn't think it was right, and I still don't think it's right. The records should be available. You shouldn't have to ask for them, and that's what this whole thing is all about, and that's what Amy's asking for. If these, if this information were available to us as it came out, it would be no big request to get the information. So that's where it comes from. It's about being open and transparent, and the whole board needs to make decisions based on the information that's coming in, not somebody holding something in their pocket saying, "This is what I think it means," or whatever. It should be, there's five members of the board. Five members of the board should see the information and make an educated decision, decision based on that. And I agree with you, Mr. Ross, 100%. Thank you.
It appears Mr. Ross wants to ask another question.
That I, I can't tell, but go ahead. Charlie, is that the-
He says I'd like to speak on Mr. Mayo's letter as well. I think he means Attorney Mayo's letter, but yeah.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Mr. Ross.
Mr. Chairman, I, I also understand the, you know, the discussion regarding attorney-client privilege, and, and you know, the, perhaps the debate that can take place over whether it's a request by the complete board or an individual, but I also think whoever is covered by that attorney-client privilege has the ability to waive that privilege at any time they'd like. So if there's a single member of the board who's been communicating with the attorney, it seems to me as though that individual is free to waive that right, so that the entire board has the ability to review that information.
Okay, that'd be good. Anything else? All right, so I guess from here on, what, what'll happen is through the process, whatever the- whatever the ten-day process, or thirty-day process, whatever it is, will happen. I'm not really privy to that. Okay, next.
So, wait a second, so the state did give a determination on the appeal that Charlie tried to get, and I would like to read that into record.
No, that's not part of the agenda, we're talking about Tony Mayo's letter, we'll put it on for the next, because I don't know anything about any appeals. All I know is, what's in front of me is, there's a bunch of public records requests. So we have Joanne put it on, you supply everybody with that letter, and we'll discuss it, I don't have a problem with that. Okay.
Wait a minute.
Go ahead.
So we, we don't have to, we don't have to file an open request for that information?
An open request?
A request for public records for that, we don't have to request that? She has to provide it.
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Well, you just said that if she has a letter, she has to provide it.
She should provide that to the members.
I'm speaking, please. You asked me, and I'm going to explain. She said that she put in a request for the information, because you said you had a letter, and that's why she asked for that information. Now you said she has a letter, but she has to supply it to the board. That's the point of this whole thing. People having a letter, reading it in, and not sharing it with the board. And then we have to make a public records request to get that, that's what she did. Now you're telling her, you can't do it, you have to provide us with a letter. You can't read it in. But you did that before. That's what this is all about. It's one-sided, it's been that way, and I'm sorry, but as a chairman, you're supposed to be open and transparent for everything. You know, you don't, you don't go and get a piece of paper and put it over here and say, well, I'm not going to share this with you, I'm going to read this, but I'm not going to share it. That's why we're in the mess we're in. It's about being transparent.
Let me just say this, Gordon, I don't know that you know what transparency means. If you've got anything else to add, then let's, let's add, or let's move on. I read something into the record, she wanted a copy of it, she got it. So it's time to move on. So our next order of business is both to hire.
Wow.
The review engineers for 640 Plymouth Street and 894 Plymouth Street.
Alan?
Yes.
We have somebody else that still wanted to talk about this in the public. It's the last agenda item that we were on, we have more people that wanted to talk about that.
Charlie, did you see anything?
The only thing I see is that Bob Ross again asked, saying how many records exist between Attorney Mayo and Mr. Diaz.
I also saw somebody else with their hand up.
Well, I don't see, I see nobody with their hand up at this point.
To answer Mr. Ross's question, in a one-year period, from April last year to now, I have no idea. None whatsoever.
May I ask a question?
Well, sure, go ahead. Your question.
Do those records solely exist between yourself and Attorney Mayo?
Probably not. Typically, if, if I've got a question, and it depends on whatever the subject was, I will CC Joanne on it, I usually try to do that. So I don't know if he sends something back, if he CCs Joanne or not, I mean, there hasn't been very, well, there's been, I've had numerous conversations with Attorney Mayo, but bear in mind that I'm on two boards, so. And, and there's been a lot of things going on, but as far as planning board business, it's been, been very limited, so. But in order to determine exactly how long it's been, I mean, someone's got to do a search.
Well, I also, I, I, I'm not an attorney, so I couldn't speak to it, but I believe if the, if the secretary's been copied on those, then a third party has been made aware of that correspondence, which would waive attorney-client privilege.
That's beyond me. We have a public records request, that request and information went to Attorney Mayo, and this is his response. I'm not going to read into it, I'm not going to read out of it. If it's, if I get something from somebody that says that they want a year's worth of information, and someone wants to pay to have it done, I don't have a problem with that, so.
I, I think the bigger question, though, for, for us taxpayers would be, why is that information not segregated and filed in such a way that it would be readily available? The, the thought that, that public records have to be, you know, searched, and I guess I wouldn't understand why you individually would be searching, I would think most correspondents would be going through a town email address, and somebody who works in IT would be searching for those records. If correspondence has taken place with a personal email address, then I think that's a different story, and, and you know, and the work would be in your court to collect those records.
And I, I don't want to let you finish, Mr. Ross, but that was part of that request, personal email. So I'm not, I'm not an email person, so I have no idea how to go in and search for emails. Anything that's in the town email is in the town email, anything that's in my email. So if they want the information, I don't have a problem. But someone has to go and do it. It's not going to be me. So.
Transparency.
Alan, David Massio has put his hand up.
I'm sorry?
David Massio has put his hand up.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Massio.
Good evening. Alan, how many, how many emails did you take through your private email versus what was supposed to be through a town email for town business? Mr. Ross makes a good point as to, you know, how much information should be led through town email for all the other members to correspond to as well. So if you're using your private email for public business, then obviously, it's not helping the situation, and it's actually compiling your information that you don't need in your personal email versus, for town business versus public business.
Okay, so.
If you don't know how to use your email.
Clarifying the question, I can, I can tell you that in my town email.
If you're using your private email for public business, and then you turn around and say, I don't know how to use my email, and you can't post it towards the other members, then you probably shouldn't be using your private email for public business as a planning board member. Whatever you do, a planning board member, board of health member, I understand you hold different, different boards, but if you're, if it's, if it's public meeting, agenda items or correspondence, you should be on, on your, your town email, so that you can give it to Joanne, so she can help spread the word to the other board members. I mean, you know, if, if, if it's something that pertains to somebody's business or residence in town, and it's holding them up because of a, a public records request, and you don't want to give it up because you can't, you don't understand email, it's kind of insane to have it sent someplace that nobody can help you with it.
Okay, so what's your question, Dave? How many emails have I received on my town email?
Have you received in regards to the planning board that they should have, that they should have received?
Oh, no idea. All I can tell you is that the last time I looked, I've had close to 500 emails that went to my town email address, and I always request that anything that's sent to the town email address go to my personal so that I can review it. That's all I can tell you.
Very transparent.
We also had a question from Gordon Andrews, I assume C Andrews in this case. Are you asking questions for the board, and are you CCing the secretary for what isn't, isn't the board? Excuse me for a minute, somebody posted something else while I was trying to read this.
I think the answer to that is.
Can you, sorry, Alan, let me finish with Gordon, just to be polite. Are you asking questions for the board, and you CC the secretary, what isn't the board being copied? The secretary works for the board, I like to ask that question.
Okay, anything that I, that I send out to, whether it be an applicant, or to Joanne, Joanne is CCed on all of my emails, to answer that question. If I had a correspondence to Charlie for some particular reason, I would CC Joanne. And I do the same thing with my board of health, anything goes to the agent, and it goes to the, the administrative assistant. So there's a good chain to see what transpired.
Mr. Chairman. If the secretary.
Who's speaking?
This is Gordon Andrews, 244 Elm Street.
Okay, very good, thank you.
If the secretary is being CCed on emails, those emails should be printed out and given to all the board members, so the board knows what's going on. And I think that's the issue, that if you send an email, you CC the secretary, the secretary should be providing those emails to the board members, so everybody knows what's going on. And I think that's the issue that's being raised, is your, your, the board not providing all the members the same access to the information. The secretary works for the board. So that information is the board's information. No one should have to do a public records request as a member of the board, be told they have to pay to get access to their board's records. There's no policy set by the Board of Selectmen that says that you have to do that.
Okay, also, Gordon?
No, I, I'd like to know why, why isn't the information being shared by, from the secretary to the board members? Why?
The information is. I mean, I think, I think I've gotten probably thirty-five emails this week alone being CCed, all of the, any request that comes in, so anything that I send out that's got to do with the planning board is CCed to Joanne, and when those responses, and all these complaints, I don't know who that is, but just let me finish. And when all the complaints and everything else comes in, Joanne's very good about CCing myself and everyone on the board, so that is what's happening.
But, but what I'm asking you, Mr. Chairman, is if you're sending messages to the board, to the secretary, right?
Yeah.
Why aren't you copying all the board members? Or making sure that there's a process in place? Why aren't you making sure there's a process in place that all the board members know what's going on with the communication? If you send a letter as the chairman of the board, if you sent a letter, not an email, a copy of that letter would have to go into the file that all the board members would have access to. And that's the issue, is not all the members have access to the information. This is an issue that, that this board is made up. It, it's made up this issue, everyone should have access. If there's a letter comes into the Board of Selectmen, the secretary or Charlie make sure that everyone has a copy of that letter. And he does the same thing with emails, everyone gets a copy of the email. I don't understand the difference here. I, I truly don't.
Okay, are you done, Gordon?
No, I, I'm upset that you're wasting the taxpayers' money by making all these requests.
I'm not wasting anybody's money.
You are wasting people's money, you're wasting the taxpayers' money by making, by making the board members file public records requests. And then, then the attorney goes and reviews the requests. Print, print out, the board should print out every email that the secretary gets and make it available to the members, and then the issue's done.
And that's what's happening. If you look at the email chain, you'll find that every email that goes in, Joanne CCs the members. As, our members, we cannot, I cannot communicate directly with the members, you do not hit reply all. Everything, as far as I'm concerned, goes through the secretary, she transmits it. That's following the law, whether you like it or you don't like it, that's the way the law is. Now, I did not file any public records request, okay? And this opinion came down from Attorney Mayo based on the public request. I'm not asking anybody to pay anything unless they want me to do something that's beyond what I am supposed to be doing. So I don't want to hear about transparency, and we CC, and I use my personal email to respond to everything, and I CC myself to my town email, and I CC Joanne.
That, that's not the policy the board has in place, Alan. That's not the policy the Board of Selectmen has in place, you are supposed to be using your town email to send emails. That's the policy the board put in place.
Okay.
Supposed to be using your town email.
As long as I CC myself, I'm, I think that I'm okay.
You, you're supposed to be using your town email to ensure that all the emails are captured.
Okay. Anything else? Now, let me just say this. I had nothing to do with her request, and how much it's going to cost for her request, unless it impacts me. So if she wants to go back one year, fine. I'll hire someone to come in, and they're looking at all my emails, my town email is available to whoever needs to look at it, so. Anything else? Is there anybody in for Mr. Curtin? Okay, if no one's in for Mr. Curtin, before we finish our last item, Gordon, you made the motion to open, and we're going to suspend it, I would think we need a motion to either continue this.
Alan, I, I didn't make the motion, I think Amy did.
I did.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure on, on what's supposed to happen, but I think we need a motion to continue until Mr. Curtin, there might have been some confusion as to who's supposed to be here.
Correct.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to continue the hearing.
I, I need to recuse myself before you take.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, okay, so Amy, you're going to make a motion, do we have a second? Rick, are you still with us?
I'll make a motion, we need to continue it, I have to fully make that motion, don't I?
Yeah.
Like, continue it to the next planning board meeting on. So I'll make a motion to take Anthony Curtin, Curtin Brothers' site plan review of above-ground fuel storage filed March 30th, '21, which by the way, has a forty-five day date on it, to 5/14, will continue it to May, I'm, sorry, looking at my calendar. May 6th, at 7:05 PM, okay, Joanne?
Fine, yeah, I think it needs to be a time certain, so do I have a second? Rick, are you still with us?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Do you want a second, that motion to continue?
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion, in a second, I'm going to go for a roll call vote. Joanne, you did take Gordon off at whatever, 7:46.
I'm sorry, Alan, there actually, we do actually do have another hearing at that time, at 7:05, I can put him on for a different time, but not at 7:05.
Perfect, what time do you have available, is it? Should we go to half hour?
I would say 7:30 then, at least.
What's, what's on for 7:05? Is that the?
Flower and Soul.
Yeah, so let's do that later then, I suspect it's going to take more than a half an hour.
7:45.
7:45.
So we'll put Curtin on for seven, for 7:45.
Correct, and please, please notify him.
I will.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second, I'm going to go to a roll call, Amy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Alan, yes. Gordon abstains, okay. Last item under discussion is we need to vote to have the site plan reviewed for both 640 Plymouth Street and our next meeting for Flower and Soul at 894 Plymouth Street. I'll be looking for a motion to hire one of the review engineers to review the drainage plans for both of these. I believe the board in the past has always entertained motions to send it out to to the review engineer, and to establish a dollar amount. So we need that, so that we can get the review, so we can make a decision on those. So does anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion to send them out to Amory?
Okay, hold on, a second. Gordon, why don't I just, why don't you just make the motion on Flower and Soul for Amory?
Okay.
So let's go first, Flower and Soul for Amory, Gordon will make a motion, can you put in your motion how much we want to ask them?
Yeah, so I make a motion. Yeah, so I make a motion to send out the review to Amory Engineer and requesting a estimate of what the review fees would be.
Okay, and we should probably include a number so that we can reach out to the applicant, so that he can, so that when he submits everything, we can send it out to Amory and have them send in, whether it be a thousand, two thousand, or whatever dollars, so that we have that at our meeting. Otherwise, we're going to have to continue that meeting until Amory makes his review, so.
What, what exactly are they proposing? They're going in a building that's already there, right?
Correct.
So the review shouldn't be that much.
No, there's some differences on, I think there's some, from my recollection, let me just grab it here, and, and I did have some comments. In this, for the, the engineer and review, we'll have to figure, there's some scale problems with the original plan. There is going to be some additional parking, so there might be some increase in drainage, could very well be minimal. But those should be looked at by Amory, so I think it's probably just going to be access, drainage. So right, I don't see it being very expensive. It appears that there should have been a prior site plan on that place, so we can probably have to review that. So, thousand dollars or something?
Well, there is a site plan on there that's been approved. So is this a modification to that?
Well, I did ask Joanne to try to find that plan, and, and I have not been in the office, and I will go into the office, but it's going to be early next week to go through the file to see where it is. But I think my last conversation with Joanne, there wasn't very much in the folder, or there, maybe it wasn't a site plan in the folder.
There definitely was a site plan on it.
Okay, Joanne, if you can hear me, and we, and we had this conversation, and I know you've been busy, and I told you I would come in. You haven't seen any site plan on this as of yet, have you?
No, I have been looking, and I haven't found that yet. I told you, I just found the, the storage, but I didn't find the, the other plan yet.
Okay.
I, I could go in and take a look too, I might be able to find it.
Okay, so to keep, keep it expedited, do you want to include your motion, a dollar amount? Then we'll, we'll reach out to Amory, send him the plan, and then reach out also to Flower and Soul and have them re, to establish an account.
Yeah, because the, the site plan review will be just on Flower and Soul, not, not the entire building there, so.
Correct, just bear in mind though, then, and I don't know when this building was built.
Not long ago.
Well, we adopted a stormwater management program, which should not impact this, because stormwater management is for over one acre, and I'm not sure that this is, so I think Amory would just take a look at that and make sure that, that there is no impact on our stormwater management program that we adopted. So he would have to look at that.
Well, that's why I asked, is this a total site plan, or is this modification?
All I have here is, it says, site plan, oh, site plan modification, you're correct.
Yeah, we have a existing and proposed, right?
Well, the existing would be existing conditions and then proposed additions, but the initial plan here on page one says site plan modification.
Right.
But we should have, I think the board would want the original plan.
The second sheet is existing, so that's not an as well, because.
Well, existing would be what's on the ground now, which would in fact be. They could have taken that information off.
The proposal looks like it's just adding some parking, a dumpster pad, stuff like that, nothing huge.
Right, exactly. What I found on the plan was the scale, the original scales are incorrect. Then there's some scrutiny errors on the plan, dumpster area. Another issue with scale as far as one sixty-seven, twenty-eight, G three, budding areas being scaled one inch equal a hundred feet. And I believe in our conversation with Flower and Soul, we were looking for dedicated parking areas. And if my memory is correct, they said that we're going to have waiting areas for people that come in. So proposed waiting areas, employee parking, and then dedicated areas for the rest of the building. So those were my only, when I looked at the plan, only comments at this point. But we do need to get, get it reviewed, so.
I can see the scale on the existing is obvious, calling it one fifty, it's a one twenty.
There's a scrutiny error on one of them, but I believe our regulation requires one inch equals forty.
Fifty and a twenty.
So we need a dollar amount, we've established that Amory's going to get it. Does somebody want to put a dollar amount to ask the applicant?
Twelve hundred dollars.
I'm sorry?
Twelve hundred dollars.
Okay, we have a motion? Did I get a second on that? No, we need a second on Gordon's motion, and that motion would be to hire Amory for Flower and Soul with a twelve hundred dollar initial deposit for the review. Do I have a second to that?
I'll second that.
And an estimate.
Oh yeah, we'll get an estimate before.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're going to second that. Any need for discussion? Okay, I'll go to a roll call, Amy? You're muted, Amy.
Sorry about that, yes.
Now Gordon?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Alan, yes, so that's an estimate, twelve hundred dollars. The next item would be the site plan for Curtin. I'd be looking for a motion to have the plan reviewed in a dollar amount to, to do that.
I'll recuse myself.
Yeah, Joanne just noted, seven fifty-eight. So does someone want to make a motion with a, with a dollar amount? I don't know that everybody's looked at the Curtin plan, I did spend some time on it, it's really not extensive. I, I didn't see very much, just increase in parking. Looks like there's going to be a decrease in, in some of the drainage areas. So this one here probably is not going to be a lot of money.
Should we just be consistent?
That's fine, God, that's fine.
I'll make a motion to have the site plan reviewed by Amory. Account opened, the revolving account opened for twelve hundred dollars, sorry, that was a little bumpy.
It's okay, do I have a second to that?
Yes, for Curtin, six forty Plymouth Street, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, any need for discussion? Okay, so I'm going to go to a, a roll call, Amy?
Yep.
Rick?
Yes.
Alan, yes, so I'd vote Joanne is three, zero, one. Yeah, the one would be abstained, Gordon abstained. Just a couple of comments on this, this particular plan that I'll, I'll send out. I just let the board know that under the Halifax, the new bylaw, the MS four plan, I think we need to ask on plan as to whether or not any of the, any of these plans impact that particular bylaw. If it doesn't, there should be a note on there, so it says that the disturbance area, and that our regulation, which, which we adopted a couple of years ago, requires anybody that, that disturbs more than one acre, okay, must file with the Conservation Commission a plan. I don't believe either one of the plans require that, but I think there should be a note on the plan, especially since we have the bylaw, that there is no impact. So I'm going to ask the review engineer, I'll, when we talk to Amory, I'll send a note to him. And of course, I'll CC Joanne on that. Okay, meeting minutes. Oh, before we get into meeting minutes, I do have one item, and I do not have the email. And it came through late, there was an email from Attorney Mayo regarding the floodplain bylaw that we passed a few weeks ago.
Yep, I saw it.
Okay, there was some grammatic errors in there, and I think there was just in abbreviations and in, in some of the wording, I don't think it's going to really impact it. So what I'm, what I'm going to do is to, I'll have to reach out to, back to Attorney Mayo to say, okay, can we make the editorial changes in the warrant? Is that going to be sufficient? Or put the town meeting on notice that there was some minor errors in there? So I'm going to be looking for some guidance on that, and then we'll reach out to the Selectmen with whatever Attorney Mayo says, whether, hopefully we won't have to do a new hearing. Maybe we can make some editorial adjustments at town meeting and proceed with that.
Generally, generally, that's, if they're minor changes, they're made at the town meeting.
Okay, and, and I don't know that they changed, it was something like.
Just fixing something.
The abbreviations were off, and then, okay, so fine, I'm just going to let the board know that, that I will, I'll be reaching out to Attorney Mayo on that one. Okay, next item on the agenda is March fourth meeting minutes. Joanne, which page are we on, twenty-sixth? Okay, somebody's going to have to refresh me on this one. Just the one that we have, two sets of meeting minutes?
Yep, we have additions, we have corrections to, and additions to the secretaries with board member additions and corrections.
You want to hold this until we have a full board? I'm going to say that I.
I guess, I, I guess it would probably just be, be a question of, did the additions that I add here not happen? Because if they didn't happen, but if they did, then what's the harm? And it's on the video anyway. So I would make a motion to approve Amy Troop's additions to the March fourth, two thousand twenty-one meeting minutes, as it is directly from the video.
So I have a motion in a second, and, and I'm going to do this for discussion purposes, Amy. I did not review the tape. That I can tell you.
Okay.
So, my opinion is the secretary, if the secretary takes the minutes, I'd go with them.
So wait a second.
If you, if you want to hold off until we got a third person, I don't, let me just see here. Did we have, see, Mark was here, we had a full board. So I'll go to a vote if you want to, it's up to you.
Well, if you want to have discussion, let's discuss it. So you had that discussion, so were you going to say that the discussion that Andrews, Alan, and, and that whole discussion between you and Gordon Andrews didn't occur?
Then I don't know.
Oh, okay, do you want to read it?
I, I'm not going to, I'm not going to sit here and read it now, I mean, I think I'd have to review the tape.
It's been over three meetings.
That's the best thing I would do, is review that tape and, and say, okay, Amy's right, Amy's wrong. I did not review it, so based on the information that I have, I, I'm really comfortable with Joanne's minutes. So if you want to go to a vote, I don't have a problem with that.
I just, I just had a question, Amy, what do you want? You want all the minutes to be verbatim now, is that what you're looking for?
No, there was a whole section of this that was missing, that just was labeled with, we couldn't understand this, and there was plenty of understanding and just a total disregarding of all of the underlying section, was just not even put in the minute, so it stopped the meeting short. And it is in the video, and, and you know, we keep hearing.
See the whole thing, why don't they just watch the video? I think Joanne's minutes are, are good enough, well, for me, my opinion. I don't just see it necessary to pretty much almost do it verbatim. Somebody wants to see it, they watch the, watch the meeting, that's all.
It's not verbatim, it's a section that's missing.
It's an awful lot to read here.
Well, we've had over three meetings, I mean, last time, I, I keep getting scrutinized that it's over three meetings, right? Well, we're over three meetings, you've had these minutes since March eighteenth. And so part of it is that you should read it. But it, it did happen, and quite frankly, if it was the reverse, that something was left out that made you look silly, you would want it put into the minutes as well. Am I wrong? Rick?
Yeah, I guess not, I mean, jeez, heaven forbid I look silly, but.
Well.
You know.
Part of the story.
Like I said, I know it's Joanne, I'm just, I've always been fine in Joanne's minutes, that's all there is to it. She's just, she gets to the point and she takes care of it, and that's it.
She's the secretary and I'm a board member.
It's her job.
But we're the board members and these are our minutes. So it, it happened.
Okay.
So I'm just asking for a full account of that section to be put in here. Is it because it doesn't look that great upon somebody that it doesn't want to be put in here? Is that why we're blocking it? Because this is always why we're fighting, and, and it's because you guys don't want to put in the whole story. The whole story is, is that Alan blocked me from talking about an agenda item. And we just needed to say, oh, and so then the, the conversation of being stuck up for, now all of a sudden, we don't want to put that in. And that's exactly how it is, it's clear on the video. I'll share it around if you want to, or, but it's, it's here because it should be here. It shouldn't be cut short, that's enough of that whole thing. Like people claim bullying, it's bullying to not put the whole story of what happened to me in this here minutes. I'm a board member and I should be respected to have my part of the story put in here, and that is all I added. And if you're afraid of that, that's just too bad, and it really shows a character thing that you wouldn't want to show some part of something. It's, it's that simple, it's not verbatim. It's, this part is to add in here, because I don't, I'm not going to sum up that. But it's a straight up way it is.
It's not, you know, it's not being afraid of anything, it's just, I just don't see the need of all that. If somebody wants to see the whole thing, then they watch it, that's all, just watch the video.
If you put yourself in my shoes, then you would actually look at this and see why it needs to be added here. And I believe that the Town of Halifax residents absolutely deserve to see the whole story.
Anything else, Amy? If there's nothing else, I mean, if you want, we'll go to a vote, or we will for Mark, it's your, it's your call.
Well, we already know what the vote's going to be, it's going to be two-two, so that's where again, where did the attorney information that was, was asked for about what happens when we have two-two on minutes? Can we have that attorney information? Because it's not about me, this is about the board. We asked the attorney for this information, and then it doesn't get to the board. Why?
Did we get, did we get an opinion from counsel? Joanne, just bear with me, did we? Joanne, can you hear me?
Yeah, hi.
Did we get some sort of an opinion?
Yes, we did.
From one of the councils, that?
Yeah.
Okay, did you, I don't know if you can see that, did you share that opinion with everyone?
That was a long time ago, that was just to post both, if there was a tie, that they should both be posted.
Okay, so I guess that, that's your, your answer, so do you want to move to a vote, or?
Again, no, if we got that information, can we see it as a board? This is what I was asking for, this is the exact thing right here. Why can't we see this? We asked for it as a board, I remember that, why didn't the attorney information get to the Planning Board? Why? We, as Halifax residents, pay for those attorneys to give us this information. We asked for this information, and now I'm hearing from a secretary what the information is. And I'm supposed to just say, yeah, that's exactly what it was. I didn't read it, I didn't get to see it. Just like earlier tonight, when we talked about my public records request is actually just a planning board request. It had nothing to do with public records. It had everything to do with, I need the information for this, for that, and for this, like we have discussed in our meetings. It's not just for Amy Troop, it's for the Town of Halifax. Okay?
Okay, I'm going to move, I'm going to move to a vote, and then if we got something from Attorney Mayo. Okay, I'm going to move, I'm going to move to a vote, and then if we got something from Attorney Mayo, and I, I recall reading something, that will be invited. So we're going to, we're going to move to a vote. We, we have a motion in a second. The, the motion is to accept the March 4th, 2021 meeting minutes marked Amy Troop. Amy?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Rick?
No.
Alan, no.
Great. See, and there you go. Can you please forward the email from Attorney Mayo regarding what happens with the tie vote on minutes, since that Town of Halifax paid for that? And we put more regard on a secretary than we do an elected official of the Town of Halifax. Okay.
Okay, that's fine. Joanne?
Yes, Alan.
We have two sets of meeting minutes. Is the second set, which you prepared, I know that I've got them, probably in my last package.
Both were in this package.
Okay, okay, I've got pages.
Page 21.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The first page of mine.
Oh, I see it. I'm sorry.
26 are Amy's.
Okay, all right. So I, I was looking at the agenda and I only saw the one date. Okay, so we'll, we'll start again. So we have the March 4th, 2021 meeting minutes. At the top of them, they're page 21 in our agenda. They're marked Joanne Snow. Do I have a motion to approve these minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do I have a second? Hearing none, I'll second that. Is there any discussion?
Is there, just to make this dumb question, but is there any chance of just accepting both of them? Read whatever they want.
What, what I believe is supposed to happen, or what, what's probably going to happen, is we will post both of these meeting minutes, and I believe that that's what happened in the January meeting minutes that were were not voted upon. I think both meeting minutes will be in there. So anyone that wants to look at them will be, can look at Amy's minutes, and they'll look at Joanne's minutes. The only thing that might be helpful is that where we've got this dissension in the meeting minutes is that it might be some reference as to where someone could view those, whether they be on, I'm not sure if it's YouTube or Area 58 or whatever. So if, if, if the maker of the motion wants to have them add that, I would suggest that we add it to both meeting minutes. And whoever needs to, to look at them can always refer to that tape.
The link is right there with the meeting minutes. I post that with that.
Okay, you got to bear with me. Okay, I'm on your meeting minutes, Joanne.
Right, but when you go, when you go to the town website, you'll, where the meeting minutes are posted, you can, the link will be right there, right there, and you can see them in the meeting. You can watch the meeting right there.
Do they need to be on the meeting themselves? I mean, I'm not one to go on the website and have to go here, go here, and go the other place. So should they, in fact, be posted at the end of our meeting minutes? I mean, this doesn't happen. I mean, most boards and committees are, you know, meeting minutes take three minutes. So does the board feel as though they would prefer to have that link added to the minutes themselves? So if someone wasn't savvy enough to, to know that they had to look someplace else for the link?
First of all, I would like the information from the attorney regarding any of this before we make any in, information. So please, Joanne, as you CC all things to us, can you CC that information from Attorney Mayo to all of us regarding what happens with tied meeting minutes? So this proves my point.
Okay, so at, at this point, Rick, you made the motion. Do you want to have Joanne add to the meeting minutes someplace at the bottom? Because I think now with the meeting minutes, you got to add all the, the chat stuff. So i- is it possible or probable, Joanne, to, on the meeting minutes that are posted themselves, put the link?
I do put the live link right there. You, you can click on it right there.
Okay.
Where the meeting minutes are posted.
Okay, so Rick, do you mind amending your motion, and I will go back to the other one? To include that on the minutes themselves, the link will be available? Okay, so you, you want to amend your motion?
Yeah.
So the motion is going to be to accept Joanne's minutes, March 4th, or the ones printed, Joanne Snow. And at the base of that, or somewhere, she's going to put the link to where someone can view the video, or whatever it is. So we have a motion in a second, and I'll go to a roll call.
I, I don't understand. What's the motion? To put, put a link to the video on it?
The motion is to approve the March 4th meeting minutes, page 21 in our book, they're marked Joanne Snow's. And at the end of that, to, on the minutes themselves, put in the link where someone can view the tape, and they can make their own decision on.
Well, why have minutes at all then? Why not just say, hey, this is the planning board meeting, da, 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 and here's the link to the video?
Okay. There's the motion, and there's, there's a second, so.
Roll call?
Amy?
I'm thinking. Can you move, come back to me?
Gordon?
No.
Rick?
Yes.
Alan, yes. Amy?
I'm going to go with a no.
Okay.
So does that mean that you don't put that on there?
Yeah, because the vote, yes. Okay. So yeah, we're not going to put it on there. Okay, and I was actually going to go back to the March 4th meeting minutes that weren't decided to see if you wanted to put the link on that one.
The link on the website.
The link, the link is there, Alan. That's what she said.
Yeah, it's okay.
You know, so it's, when you go to the minutes, it's there.
Yeah. All right, we got some email correspondence. One from Joanne Snow. We have one from the building department. We have notices and letters from budding towns, which I've gone through. And we've got notices from boards and committees, the zoning board and public notice. Is there any discussion on any of them items?
You said that we had one from Joanne Snow?
Oh, I'm sorry. Joanne Andrews. Hearing none, I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to re, read the letter in.
Okay.
I was upset the board failed to ask for a site plan for the property. Now could I see the site plan for 350 Industrial Drive? As there are two businesses running out of there, one a hairdresser and one a sign, Newcomes Trees. Plus there's equipment, tractor, trailer, truck, equipment and stuff, like another tree service that's operating in town. The town lists on its website, Newcomes Trees Service, I would like an email copy of that site plan. Does it show the location of the equipment? Same should go for every tree service.
Okay, you read it in the record? There's nothing else in front of the board? I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I, I would like to read into record the Town of Halifax Office of Building Commissioner letter.
Fine, go ahead.
I would like to also state that
Hold on, what page you on? Oh, okay, 38.
I would also like to state that I looked up after our last meeting on April 1st, what 959 was, to find out. But it is here, Amanamani Trust, CNA Realty Trust, PO Box 562, Hanson, Mass. 02341. It was written on April 1st, prior to our meeting, when apparently we didn't know who owned this at our meeting. To home it may concern. On March 26, 2021, this officer, the fire chief, and Kathy Evans, a representative of the Conservation Commission, made a site visit with your permission at Zero Montfonsit Street, assesses map 95 Lot 9. During that site visit, it was determined by this officer, for zoning purposes only, a light industrial use was occurring, involving storage and processing of stumps, logs, dirt, wood waste, and some machinery. As Zero Montfonsit Street assesses map 95 Lot 9, is partially located in the I Industrial Zone District, under 167-7C Table of Use Regulation. This would be an allowed, as of right, use, as long as it remained within the confines of the I Industrial Zone District, and the definition of light industrial use under Chapter 167.3. At this time, and within 60 days of this notice, it is necessary for you to apply for a site plan review with the planning board, so accurate boundaries, information, and determinations can be made by this office in order to determine zoning compliance. If you wish to pursue this matter, under Chapter 167-21, you may, one, appeal the building inspector's decision by filing an appeal to the zoning board of appeals within 30 days of that decision. Or, two, apply for a variance and/or special permit from the zoning board of appeals. Applications are available from the Regulatory Board, Secretary, or the Town Clerk's Office. Sincerely, Robert Picarilly, Building Inspector/ Zoning Enforcement Officer, CC, Board of Selectmen, Board of Health, Fire Chief, Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals. Any discussion?
No, no, we, this is corresponded, so you've read it into the record. Everybody's aware of it. It's part of our meeting minutes. If there's nothing else before the board, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. It being 8:23.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Anybody want to second that motion?
I'll second.
Could we have a motion in a second? I'm going to go to a roll call vote. Amy?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Alan, yes. Joan, uh, Joanne, it being 8:23, we are adjourned. Thank you, folks.